At this time, I will call the September fifteenth, twenty twenty five County Council Meeting to order. First item of business is to recognize the Honorable Tommy Atkins from District Three for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord, I think, yeah, we got serious problems in our country. And out of all the frivolous things that we recognize, and after what we've seen take place here lately, and there's really no other way that we can say it. But ultimately, we've reached a point where there's just no more fear. There's lack of fear of God anymore in our country. And we're slacking. And ultimately, we need to get back what we used to have. And I pray that it happens soon. There's many things that are going on. And Lord, man professes his self-wise, but ultimately, he's becoming a fool. God, just cry out that our nation will soon make about faith. And I pray that you will be with us tonight and hear the prayers of many. Be with the families that are hurting. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here tonight. It's always good to see folks come out and participate in local government. I want to thank you, Mr. Atkins, for your prayer. I do think that our community and our world is calling for revival and calling for unity amongst our community members. The next item on our agenda is the oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. When I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, our county attorney will meet you at the front and swear you into office. We have Christina Love with Keep York County Beautiful and At Large Position, James Wallace, Planning Commission, District Six, Richard Simeon, Rock Hill, York County Airport Commission, Jack Skirlnight, York County Forever, District Three, Jennifer McAdams, York County Forever, ex officio, Kyle Eller, Board of Zoning Appeals, District Two, Megan Nelson, Rock Hill, York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, from District One, Sharon Reed, Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, Annie Laurie Wheat, York County Culture and Heritage Commission in District Six. On behalf of the council and by behalf of everyone in this room and all of our residents in York County, we want to thank you for agreeing to service on the various board that you are being appointed to and sworn in tonight. We wish you well in your position. We thank you for the work that you do. You do it without any payment, and usually you don't get thanked for it, but we are thanking you tonight for your volunteerism. We do have a couple of appearances tonight. I'll first recognize our solicitor, Kevin Brackett, who is going to come forward and help us recognize Maria Cabrera for her service in retirement with the York County Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. It's always a pleasure to be here with you today. I take one moment of personal privilege to thank you, Mr. Atkins, for your kind and thoughtful words. We are in troubled times, and we need people to lead with open hearts and open minds. I'm grateful for what you said. I am here today to first thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here today to thank a wonderful member of my staff, Maria Cabrera. When I first became solicitor back in 'oh six, I was out and about in the community, and I went to a local tackle shop and asked the gentleman who ran it, I needed to get some fishing line, get my line restrung, get the reel cleaned. And so I'm talking to him, and he says, well, what do you do? Who are you? And I told him, he said, oh, the solicitor. You're a prosecutor. I said, yes, sir, I'm the solicitor. I just got into office back in two thousand and six. He said, is that so? He said, well, I've got a question for you. I've got an issue. And I'm like, okay, what is this going to be about? He reaches in his drawer and he pulls out a fistful of bad checks, and he says, I want to know what you're going to do about these. He said, I've got probably, you know, eight hundred, a thousand dollars worth of bad checks here, and you know how much trouble it is for me to collect these? Forty-dollar check, fifty-dollar check, I've got to go down to magistrate's office, file all these papers, make all these trips back and forth. He's like, it's not worth my time. So I just throw them in this drawer, and I can't do anything with them. He said, this is supposed to be a crime. What are you doing about it? And I said, well, I'll tell you what I'm going to do about it, sir. I'm going to hire Maria Cabrera. She just came up here from Miami, where she was a paralegal down there for a lawyer for many, many years, and she is a sharp, sharp lady, and she's going to fix this problem. And by God, she did. She started the fraudulent check unit in my office back in two thousand and seven, and within two and a half years, we were doing an article for The Herald for collecting our millionth dollar, million, for small businesses in York County. These are people who, you know, run tight margins. They, every dollar counts when you're running a small business. So it meant a lot to them. If you get a two-hundred-dollar bad check, that's not coming out of your employee's pocket. That's coming out of your pocket. You've got to make up for that somewhere along the way. And these people were getting burned, and it was a cost-benefit analysis for them because it does take their time. It takes their effort to go down there, and sometimes it's just not worth it. So I hired Maria in October of two thousand and seven, and she started that program. And since then, she has collected millions. We switched our software several years ago, so we lost the bulk of, I tried to run a report and figure out how much. I would guess, given that we collected a million within about two and a half years, I would guess that all told, she's probably collected somewhere between seven, maybe eight million dollars. Just recently, the county started sending bad checks for people who were paying their taxes for their automobiles, and they would get their little sticker to put on their car. That's fraud. They gave us the check, we gave them the sticker, the check bounced. Maria's collected probably a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the county of taxpayer money that would have, y'all would have been the ones going to the magistrate's office and trying to do all that. For years and years, she did that, and that's just one of these many county jobs that somebody in this county does that y'all don't know about every day. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to come up here and brag on her because she has literally made the difference for some small business and kept them afloat, kept the lights on, kept people employed, and kept a small business going in York County. And it means the world to the small business owner, it means the world to me to know that we're providing that service for them, and y'all are the ones that helped set this position up, and I'm grateful to you for that. She's worked with me now for eighteen years, and about five years ago, a little less than five years ago, a gentleman who worked in our office named Bill Stinson, who did our expungements, which is when somebody gets a charge dismissed or they're entitled under the law to have it taken off their record. Bill would help them with that. He passed during COVID. He was another wonderful, wonderful guy who worked, sort of labored in obscurity and really helped people keep their records clean so they could get jobs when they're entitled to it, they should get it. Maria jumped in after Bill passed away and picked that up, and now Maria is the person people from all over the state of South Carolina call and from other solicitors' offices when they need help on how to do an expungement. She is like the subject matter expert on that now. In just a few years, she has become sort of the master of that subject in South Carolina. So she is not just a tremendous resource for people here in York County, but all over South Carolina. So we're certainly going to miss having her there every day in the office, but we're grateful for everything she's done over the years. Maria Cabrera, eighteen-year veteran. Now, I will say she's going to come back part-time and help us train the new person and come back a few hours because she is also a certified interpreter, speaks Spanish fluently, so victims of crime who are Spanish, she helps us make sure that they know what's going on and keeps them up to speed and teaches them everything they need to know about the system. So Maria, thank you for everything you've done. You have been such an asset to my office and to the people of York County, and I just want you to have great quiet.
Thank you. It's been my honor.
And they have finally done something to memorialize the occasion. If you want to hold that up. Thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Maria, I know I speak for all of the council, everyone in this room and our residents. We appreciate your service that you provided to the community, especially to our small businesses. We certainly wish you well as you move forward. We hope you've got something fun planned, and you don't have to do any of that stuff now, but you certainly have earned the right to. If you want to, you certainly can address the council or address, you don't have to if you don't want to.
I just want to thank Felicity Brackett for giving me the opportunity. I'm not from here, from Miami. I'm from New England. I gave the opportunity myself to work in the office as a subordinate for the past year.
Well, thank you for what you've done and for training the next folks that will come in and take over for when you leave. And again, we wish you well in your retirement. Thank you, ma'am. We do have the Lake Wiley Marine Commission, who is here to give the annual report.
I think I skipped a little too far ahead here. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Neil Brennan, Executive Director of Lake Wiley Marine Commission. Glad to be able to brief you all again. Our mission has not changed, and I'm not sure why that's not up here, but, oh, I know why, perhaps. I'm not handling this thing correctly. Beg your pardon. There we go. Mission hasn't changed. We promote, protect, and preserve Lake Wiley and educate our residents about what we're doing here. Pollution organized by the Lake Catawba Riverkeeper is the annual river sweeps coming up on the Fourth of October. We've got ten sites this year. We get funding from the county. We provide some money. The counties provide the dumpsters, and we get donations from various businesses of tarps and gloves and bottles of water and so on and so forth. Water quality. We sponsored two swim guides this year, Catawba Riverkeeper Program, where they sample the water for E. coli on the Thursdays, come out with Friday on announcing of where you can't swim. They had four hundred and eight thousand visits, forty-five thousand views of Lake Wiley. There was one that went south over at the T G K Beach Club one time this year. So the thing works. People are looking at it, and we're keeping the people safe. This, I handed you another copy of the recent water quality data that's provided to us each month. It's a bimonthly report from the Charlotte Water people, and you can see the parameters there. Not going to go over them, but you can look at it and see the kinds of things that they report. As far as danger and buoys and no-wake buoys in South Carolina, South Carolina State takes care of that. In North Carolina, we, by law, are required to post and maintain no-wake buoys. The state takes care of the danger buoys. This year, we instituted a regulation for South Carolina waters of Lake Wiley. Has to do with insurance for jet skis. North Carolina has a law that says if you want to rent a jet ski to somebody, you have to provide, you have to have commercial insurance yourself, and you also have to provide insurance to the person to whom you rent it, called the rentee. That was not the case in South Carolina. Talked to the South Carolina Division of Insurance, South Carolina DNR, said, do you have any problem with us making this regulation for the waters of South Carolina and Lake Wiley? Said, no, so we did. We, I talked to you a while ago about a rental vessel regulation. The purpose is to make sure that the people who rent these jet skis and pontoon boats do so safely. Key word, safely. I've had law enforcement people tell me it's the Wild West out there. You get guys down here at the boat ramps with a trailer, a truck with a trailer with four jet skis on it, and they're paying, they're renting them to whoever comes by. We've streamlined that regulation that I briefed you on a while ago last year to make sure we cut out anything about charter boats because the Coast Guard has responsibility for charter boat rentals on Lake Wiley because this is an interstate waterway. So we've streamlined our regulation to address pontoon boats and jet skis because the Coast Guard does not have jurisdiction over those rental vessels on Lake Wiley. It's a void that they wish they had, but they don't, so we're filling that void. Now, in July, we had the U.S. Coast Guard folks from the coast come on down here. Every law enforcement agency that tours Lake Wiley was briefed by the Coast Guard on how it's going to set up. We, Lake Wiley Marine Commission, provide them information about these rogue entrepreneurs who may be out there renting jet skis from the back of a trailer, and I've encountered a couple myself. And so we're filling the void, and we are providing information to the Coast Guard so they can check those guys out, and they'll take action against the ones who don't have the proper captain's licenses. This regulation that we've had has been reviewed by county attorneys, the DAs, the Coast Guard, rental people, and all the district attorneys. You know, had the police say, well, that's all well and good, but if you're not going to prosecute it, what good is it? Why should I send my police officers out there? Well, the answer is they will. We've talked to every DA, your DA, DA of Gaston County, DA Mecklenburg, all of them have said, we're happy to prosecute if, if the police choose to write a ticket for it. And again, this is a tool for the police to use at their discretion, as is the case in almost everything else. So as a matter of fact, the Mecklenburg County DA said, hey, listen, if you're going to hold training on this, we want to come too. We're glad to have you. What does it do? It makes, Lake Wiley Marine Commission will issue permits to the people who want to rent these vessels out. We'll give them a sticker to put on the vessels that they rent. We'll make sure they have liability insurance. They give a safety brief and that they provide a familiarization ride to that guy from Tennessee or Illinois or wherever who comes and wants to rent a boat and have a good time on Lake Wiley. We want them to have a good time, want to do it safely. That's the whole idea. Anybody who violates this thing, it's a class-three misdemeanor. That's as much teeth as we have that we can put in this, given the regulation that set us up back in nineteen eighty-seven. So that's what we're doing. How else do we support law enforcement? We've got life jackets and chem lights that we put on the boats for them to hand out to people if they need a light jacket, or they're out after dark and they don't have lights, they can use the chem lights to mount them on their boat. I briefed you, I think for the past five years, about the Gaston County Police Boat House. Finally, it's coming to fruition. Gaston County has got it funded in their budget now. We're going to provide some seed funds, and it's going to be down at the end of the South Point Road at the new swim area they got down there. They asked us to move it from up north and move it down south. We said, sure, you know, we're providing you the funds where y'all want it. And the chief police of the Gaston County said, we'd like it there. Sedimentation remains to be a cancer on the lake. I think one of your commissioners experienced firsthand some of the sedimentation in Lake Wiley. I don't know if you shared this story. He went for a boat ride the other night with my chairman, who's from the U.S. Coast Guard, and Ray Weber, they like this shallow water. They're kind of a shallow water group. We Navy guys kind of kid him about that, and he managed to run it to ground. So he made his point emphatically that there's sedimentation that needs to be corrected on the lake. Now Gaston County's got some enhanced storm control measures that they put in. You can see them there, but they didn't want to put anything in their county ordinance. So Catawba Riverkeeper and the Lake Wiley Marine Commission went before the cities and said, how about y'all putting it in your ordinances? Belmont has. Went to Cramerton and Mount Holly, and they said, yeah, we're going to follow suit. Matter of fact, one of them said, let's, we'll get together at Belmont and see how they worded it, so we worded it the same way. Wolf closest to the sled, Lengbia. This is an invasive cyanobacteria species, and I think I've talked to you about this before. It comes up as mats. It stinks. Charlotte Water had to spend thirty-six thousand dollars to treat the water this last year because of the smell. You don't want to have drinking water. Don't touch it. Don't let your kids swim in it. Don't let your pets get it. It can kill them, make your kids sick. Lake Norman had ten acres, you can see, ten, twenty, and four and a half. We had a little bit on Lake Wiley. This, that was last year, twenty twenty-four. This year, twenty-five acres, Norman, twenty-three and a half acres, and Lake Wiley, nine and a half. Now Lake Gaston, where this stuff really got going several years ago, they had only, were able to treat only four hundred and seventy-seven of the thirteen seventy-seven acres there. Well, why was that? Well, the reason is because they're up at the top of this curve. It took North Carolina Wildlife, I'm sorry, not the wildlife, but let me go back there. North Carolina State University Aquatic Plant Management Company or Group to research this stuff and find out what was the algae side that's going to best treat this stuff. Well, they came up with it. And the cost to treat, and it takes three to four years to do this, so it's not a one-and-done thing, okay? We've got to continue to do this over the years. Cost Lake Gaston, seven hundred and eighteen thousand and twenty-one, while we were still trying to figure this stuff out. When they finally did it, it cost them this year, oh, one point two million dollars to treat what they could. They ran out of money. They can't treat it all, so they had to concentrate on the swim areas and marinas and stuff like that. So again, we initiated a symposium in January, and you folks were represented there. We had a presentation by the North Carolina State Aquatic Plant Management people, and they went into the history of it, the science of it, and why it takes so long to treat it and how long it takes to treat it. And we came up with a plan on how the counties could support this. Now, York County, y'all have to worry about Wiley. Some of our others have to worry about Wiley, Mountain Island Lake, Lake Norman. So I want to thank you all for helping fund this effort. It's going to take a little while, and I ask you again to support that. Now, what we're going to do is have another conference to review the results. This was a six-month program. They treat this stuff in the middle of the month, so we should be treating it right about now. We'll get the results. We'll convene another second annual Lengbia Conference to figure out, how are we doing? Are we getting this stuff or not? And then we'll review the funding for the out years. Now, what we did, we funded it ourselves out of our budget in twenty twenty-four. Thankfully, this year, we will get some help from the counties to do that because we couldn't keep doing it. As you know, we get twenty-five K, and it took us from each county, it took us thirty-one last year.
And we thank you, and we thank the commission. I'm responsible for keeping the meeting going forward, so I'll give you just a few seconds to wrap.
Yes, ma'am. Will do. So again, I made the point there, I'll skip this federal law. It's a law that says you've got to get analyses done if you want to build a lock here. You all don't do that. Mecklenburg has a conference ordinance, they don't have to. Gaston got gigged on an audit. They're doing it now, and it costs a lot of money for people to get those analyses done. We educate the people of these various things, our Citizens Water Academy, our newsletter, our meetings, boat shows, and our website. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you so much.
Have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. We appreciate the work that the Lake Wiley Commission does and... Oh, wow. Well, congratulations to you. It sounds like you're going to have something more fun to do after this, this is the last year.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we anticipate Ray will be giving you the brief next year. Our chairman now, he's rolling off. We have term limits, so he's at the end of his time, so this is a good transition for me to step aside unless some of the young guys take care of it.
Thank you, sir. You've done a great job.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you all.
We move now to our public forum session of the agenda. This is an opportunity where individuals can sign up prior to the meeting getting started to speak on items. We do ask that if you're here to speak on an item that is a public hearing, we only have one public hearing tonight, that you wait and save your comments for the public hearing item so that your comments are kept within the transcript and within the meeting in the proper place and can be given credit for that. When I call your name, we only have a few folks who have signed up. When I call your name, if you'd please come forward and give your name and address before you get started, and if you'll pay attention to the timer, is our timer working? I think it was working. We'll see. If you'll keep your comments to the two minutes, then I don't have to cut you off. Our first individual is Frank Jernak.
Evening, council members. My name is Frank Jernak. My wife and I live at two five nine one Lewis Sammy Road in Fort Mill. I would like to address the hazardous chemicals being used at the Sylphab facility. The quantities I am sharing with you come directly from Sylphab's own filings. Five of these chemicals are explosive and enhance fire and tendency. Over two thousand pounds of silane gas, which ignites on contact with air. Over nine hundred pounds of trimetal aluminum are self-igniting liquid, more unstable than silane. Over eleven thousand gallons of liquid oxygen, both explosive and unstable. Over sixty-three thousand pounds of nitrous oxide, which fuels combustion. Over nine thousand pounds of sulfuric acid are corrosive and fire hazard. Another set of chemicals are toxic on contact. Forty-four thousand pounds of anhydrous ammonia gas, which destroys living cells and suffocates at high levels. Nearly four thousand pounds of phosphorus oxychloride gas, so dangerous it's classified as a chemical weapon. Over fifteen hundred pounds of boron trichloride gas, known to cause seizure, coma, or death. More than eighteen thousand gallons of hydrofluoric acid, deadly if inhaled or touched. Over ten thousand gallons of hydrochloric acid, which causes burns and lung cancer. These chemicals sit eight hundred yards from Fenton Elementary and Middle Schools. They are not theoretical risks. They are not theoretical risks. They are real documented hazards, folks. So what more can you do? You can uphold zoning laws that clearly prohibit heavy industrial uses in a light industrial district. You can direct staff to issue stop work orders. You can demand real-time chemical inventories and independent inspections. And you can work with state and local federal regulators to ensure Fort Mill is not used as a dumping ground for hazards produced elsewhere. Our community is counting on you. Do not wait for an accident to happen. Use the authority, guys, you have.
Thank you, sir.
Stop this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Dorothy Johnson.
Dorothy Johnson, 6400 Royal Pines Drive, Clover. I want to speak about the Lake Wilely overlay. I want to keep, well, all, I'm sure most of the residents want to keep it as is. There's already been too many changes. It was a good plan. It was voted on and accepted by a lot of the residents. There was a lot of input. If anything, any future residences should have a minimum of one acre or half acre per lot. One acre would be beautiful, but half acre minimum should be allowed because the roads and the infrastructure cannot support all the volume. There's already over 4,000 homes, units in the pipeline. So when all that gets built up, where is, where's everybody going to be going? We're going to be sitting in traffic. Well, we're sitting in traffic already. It's only going to be worse. So I just want council to keep in mind that the Lake Wilely overlay is a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. William Kurton.
Representative William Kurton, 1224 Kobe Avenue. Coming back again to speak on the trailers moving into our neighborhood, storage buildings. We had a meeting on the other day. Majority of the neighborhoods from both sides, Glenn Eagle and Brad Moore asked me to come back and represent us. We're asking the council to deny these storage buildings to be put in our neighborhood. Again, we thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public forum session. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I would like to pull, I'd like to pull a item out, number eight, for discussion. I wasn't here at the last meeting. So we're going to pull it out and have a discussion about it.
Number eight. I will move that to the second item in new business. Is there anything else? We do have a rule that any one council member can remove an item from the consent agenda at any time. Do we, do we have a motion that reflects that?
Reflects what?
Can your motion be amended to?
Oh.
I just need to make sure. Is there any, is there anybody else that, that wants to remove anything from the agenda? All right. Motion, and the second is to approve the consent agenda with item number eight removed. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to our first public hearing item. First and only public hearing item. Council to conduct a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between York County and one or more companies identified for the time being as Project Cross, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with Project Cross providing for the payment of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue credits, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial park and other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Our first item of old business is rezoning action. Consider first reading case number 25-24, tax map number 595000135 to rezone from ID to GC, 7.2 acres in District Four.
Move to deny.
Motion and a second to deny. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy.
I, I just want to make it clear that I've, I've met with the potential buyers of the property. We wrote the property. We discussed the plans for the property. I met with members of the neighborhood, I've, neighborhood I'm very familiar with, know several people over there. And we had an in-depth discussion about what's the best use for this property right next to their neighborhood. And it was overwhelming that they didn't want to see storage units placed right next to their neighborhood. So, and I'm the type of council person that I don't want to drag it on and have members of the community coming back, have the owner or potential owner coming back when I already know the sentiments of the neighborhood. And even when I first saw it on the agenda, I didn't think it was the highest and best use of the property anyway. But that was just reaffirmed by my conversation with some of the neighbors over there. So I just want to be upfront that I didn't really like the idea, but it was really confirmed after speaking with several neighbors that live in that neighborhood that they wouldn't want to see storage units right next to their neighborhood. So that's why we're just ending it right here with a denial.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to item number two, rezoning action. Consider third reading case number 25-36, tax map number 362000178 through 189, 191, 199 to rezone from RSF 40, 40 to RMX 20, 30.12 acres in District Two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will say that there were some folks that came out to speak. And one of the things that I think is important, and if I step over anything, I'll, I'll, I'll ask you to let me know that from legal or from management. But my understanding is that this agreement was reached by the parties prior to this, that this applies, that the conditions apply to, to the entire subdivision. It reply, it applies to all the lots that were approved back in June of 2003. One of the questions that I had asked was whether or not what is being approved tonight increases the density of what was previously allowed. And my understanding is that it does not. And that was really my biggest concern. So I think it's important to understand that this was part of a settlement agreement and the questions that I asked were answered by legal to me and to my satisfaction. So I will support it. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to our first item of new business. Council to receive a report and approve the adoption of the 10-year fire service framework and strategy as recommended to the JPS Committee. I understand that before we have a motion that we had some information that management wanted to provide.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a brief presentation. And first I'll, I'll recognize and turn it over to our Fire Service Director, Matt Davis, who's been with us for about three months. So we wanted to provide a brief presentation, but to bring you up to speed, you know, one of our strategic plan items under the Safe Community Goal was to develop a 10-year fire EMS and Sheriff's Office plans. And so what we're here presenting on tonight is the culmination of about eight months' worth of work in developing this 10-year vision and framework. And then we have some more granular items related to a three-year plan. But what we're presenting tonight to council is the culmination of that eight months of hard work in the 10-year framework plan. And so to give you some background, we started this process in January of this year. I personally conducted strategic planning sessions with each fire department, all 16 departments of the county, including the tax districts. Our Fire Service Director, Matt Davis, he also conducted sessions with each department individually. And that all led to a strategic planning retreat with all 16 departments. And we actually even had two municipalities participate as well, Rock Hill and Tika Cave. And that was the development of our three-year strategic plan. But those are actionable steps in the immediate timeframe that will achieve this 10-year vision and goal. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Davis and he's going to give you an introduction to it, some of the framework that we've worked through, and then we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And David, thank you. I appreciate it. Madam Chair, Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come speak with you tonight. As David said, I've been here just a little over two months and I've had the opportunity to go out to meet with each fire chief and go to their station. We did kind of a good, a bad, and what we can work on. And a lot of the information that we came up with as part of our three, five-year, and our 10-year plan came from those chiefs and their engagement in this process. First, let me say that we have a tremendous group of fire service individuals. Lot of rich tradition and history. A lot of them would start telling me about how the fire department began and barbecues and, you know, those types of things. So we have a lot of great volunteers and a lot of rich history in that, and we want to build on that. Some of the things that we kind of noticed, and I'm just going to quickly go down these. And I think we've got maybe four slides, and if you have any questions, we can stop. But currently, we have 16 departments, seven tax districts. And each one of them operates as its own independent entity. While they do receive funding from the county on different levels, they operate solely. And it's very fragmented on response. It can be in training, even though a lot of them will do great things with training. It's just inconsistent. And so that really is something that we need to try to get our arms around moving forward in the next 10 years. And when we go through this, we can talk about some of the strategy, how we get there. We have an aging volunteer base. We have a lot of great folks, as I mentioned before. But a lot of them are getting older, just like myself. And we don't see the influx of volunteers or the people who have time to commit to fire services or the training. And so that's, that's a big issue moving forward for York County. Our response standards are not consistent. Depending on where you live or where your emergency is, you could get different level of response. And one of the things that we want to do is make sure that's consistent throughout the unincorporated areas of the county and even partnering with our municipalities to say we have some type of consistent level of service. We also want to make sure that everybody's getting a level, same level of service as I mentioned before. That's pretty big. We have some departments that do medical and some that don't. That's one area that needs addressed. We also need to make sure that there's equity in fire services. Not necessarily equal, but there's equity in fire service. And we'll talk just a little bit more about that when we go through the presentation. And one thing too, is that what we work on today is going to set the foundation for the next 10 years for fire services in York County. So we came up with this slogan is "One York Fire", and that really brings everybody together for a unified county fire system. Funding equities among all departments, that's a big issue now. We have some departments that get a considerable amount of money and some that get very little to survive on. We want to look at a singular funding stream. That's really important because we have fire districts that have multiple different funding avenues and we want to have a consistent, singular funding stream. And this one I kind of got hung up on, but it says professional fire service. But what we really mean is a trained fire service. A lot of times people say, well, professional means career. What we're really looking at is a trained fire service that can respond to somebody's need and take care of the situation. A lot of the decisions that we make moving forward will be based on the data. You know, a lot of fire departments say, well, we need a new station or we need a new truck, but let's talk about the data. What does the data show us? Let's talk about response times. Let's talk about putting people at the emergency. Let's talk about getting the closest emergency response vehicle there. So that's one of the things that we're looking forward to. We also need a good, strong governance moving forward. As I mentioned, a lot of these departments act independently. They may have a tax district board. They may have a volunteer board. And then we have the county who's providing funding. And we want to make sure that we have a sustainable workforce, which involves training. It could involve career staff moving forward. But right now, we want to make sure that we have a well-trained fire service moving forward. And then we want to have accountability, internal and external. So we'll be doing quarterly reports. We'll also make sure that we're very transparent with anything that we do moving forward. And that's not just for the volunteers. That's even for county fire services. So that's some of the things that we're kind of looking to forward on this "One York Fire". Any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tommy.
Explain like, as me and you talked, because, you know, I've had a big part in requesting. They helped build it and all that. But as me and you talked the other night, because me and you talked how much they think it is York County taking over and all. But explain how it isn't the county taking over and they still remain and with their identity.
Yes, absolutely.
So the rest of the council understands.
That's an excellent point, Mr. Atkins. So we want them to maintain their identity in the community. A lot of these fire departments are community-based, so they grew out of the community. They saw a need. They got together and they formed a fire department. So we want to make sure that we maintain their identity and that make sure that they're part of this program moving forward. We also realize that at some day, they may rely on the county to step up, but we still want to make sure that they're included and we're not taking over. We are there to support them until a day that maybe transitions to something else. But we are there to support them. We are not taking over.
Yeah, real quick. First of all, when it comes to this, again, it's, you look across your platform and what you identify from a framework perspective. But again, this is, this, when you lift it up a little higher, then, then really the, the data's going to drive value between not only the fire department, but your EMS and your police department. So this is a joint, really a joint effort across the board, right, from an understanding perspective.
Yes, absolutely. And that's a good point. And David might want to expand on this, but when David and they, they did the SWAT analysis and even when we started looking at milestones, we went back to the county strategic plan and the emergency response, emergency, I'm sorry.
Emergency medical response.
Emergency medical. So we're looking at all that and we are evaluating the data. Mr. Atkins and I have had some conversations about what that kind of looks forward to. But yes, we want to look at everything in the way we respond.
Yeah. And the last point I just want to make is that, you know, driving this based on data values and understanding it from a data perspective is critical. But I also think, as Tommy was saying here, is that, that, those, those discussions with each of the fire departments, understanding the characteristics of each area too, that it's, it's data plus that personal relationship to identify the best overflow for this.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, and I saw that when I visited fire stations that were considered rural versus suburban. You can see that. And that's an excellent point.
Thank you.
Next slide. Sorry. I didn't know if I had a clicker. So this is kind of our 10-year vision and the framework and what it kind of looks like. And again, I'll be glad to answer any questions about this. But it says countywide fire protection district. I kind of think of it as a countywide protection system. I know some people are going to get hung up on the words, but it is a system, a countywide system. What we want to do is eventually have a single tax district with a county village in the unincorporated area. We want to have a good governing body that sets a policy and our operational oversight and clear hierarchy. We want a continuous coverage staffing model where we may not be able to respond or their staffing may not be there. We want to look forward to that and put it where there's a need, not just on, you know, we're going to stick them in these stations, but where there's a need. And we want to, as we said before, continue on focusing on volunteer recruitment and retention. We also want to standardize level of service and have y'all adopt that, whether it be rural, urban, or suburban, what that looks like as far as our response and then work towards that goal. And then we want to remove district boundaries. And this, this one might be a little bit hard, but we believe that sending the closest emergency response is the best for the customer. We want to take away those district boundaries and look at how we can serve the customer. I believe that the customers want somebody to solve their issue. They may not be really wanting to know if the truck's red or white or that, but they want to, somebody to resolve their issue as quickly as possible. We also want to both oyster our training. We currently are trying to hire, or we're going to hire a training officer. We currently are trying to hire, or we're going to hire, a training officer that will work with our volunteers and our paid staff to make sure that we get them to a level that we feel comfortable with. And then, finally, we want to improve our community risk reduction, our public education, that's something that, you know, each department does a good job, but I think if we focus our efforts jointly, we can have a bigger impact on that. Any questions on that slide?
So, Council, I'll jump in and just reference back to that last slide, we don't have to go back, but one of the key tenets of this is that we remove the us versus them mentality, and what we want to do is unify. That's a very important phrase that I want to keep driving home when Matt referenced, that this is a system, it's not a department, it is a fire protection system, that that's unifying everyone under one common goal, one objective, and one service delivery model, and that's what we're working towards. So, tonight, that's our presentation to you, is to actually adopt this 10-year vision and framework. And a component of that is our three-year strategic plan. So, I'm not going to go through the entire plan, but the six goals that were identified are really something that is going to establish the foundation for this 10-year goal. Now, I would love to say that we can shorten that timeframe, that's a question that I got from a couple of people, and we would love to do it sooner, but we want to be realistic with our timeframe, and so, that's why we say 10 years is our goal and what we shoot for. But we would love to have that be sooner. But with the standard level of service, that's every community receiving the same response and protection, same staffing and workforce. That means everyone in the county is protected under the same criteria. That's 24-hour staffing, whether it's volunteers or career, that we can establish benchmarks and meet those every time. Training and development, so every firefighter, regardless of station, location, career, volunteer, are receiving the same training, and there's a minimum standard that we have, these are our three-year goals. Communication and collaboration, we've already committed to that, and Mr. Davis referenced our communication, our quarterly updates. We're already working through that and actually establishing that. And finally, the governance integration and community risk reduction, that we'll be relying on county council throughout our budgeting process. To hold us accountable as we bring forward items, we need to report on our success, giving you those measurable so that you can see where we're tracking, where we're at, but also that we can provide data behind the funding and the path forward that we request at that time. So, that's our commitment to you as county council. So, in conclusion, our last slide. There we go, so, council's actions, and what we're requesting is for your adoption, so that's what we're actually requesting tonight, and what the charge was out of the request from the JPS committee was the adoption of the 10-year framework. And with that, it's incumbent upon your supporting our funding request in year one. Now, funding request isn't just in the level of staffing, but that may be some of those foundational principles, feasibility studies, actually conducting some facilities analysis, capital equipment purchases, those are all things that will be discussed in our budgeting process, not just this year, but for years to come. But we'll always commit to presenting you with a structured plan that actually makes sense. We want to be very good stewards of money. One of the things that I want to make sure we incorporate every year is showing you how we're being good stewards, and we're increasing the efficiency of what we're doing. We can build on what we're doing well, but we can also admit where we can do better, and that's what this is. So, authorizing our policy and ordinance development, we'll continue to look at that, beginning with those foundational steps. And our commitment to you and to the JPS is to commit to our periodic implementation check-ins. So, I won't bore you with the summary, but really, what we're asking is the adoption of this 10-year framework, and we hope that we break down the silos that exist around the county and create this unified service. And with that, I'll be happy to ask questions and any that you have for Mr. Davis as well.
Well, thank you, David and Matt, for the information and the comprehensive approach to this. I guess one question that I do have, and I apologize, I didn't get a chance, I know that I received a call over the weekend to reach out and ask some questions. I think at this point, what I understand council is being requested to do is to adopt the goals. We have a clear, rich history in our fire service of having lots of individuals to serve, and we want to find ways to support that, recognizing that volunteerism is difficult thing to do going forward. I just want to make sure that I understand, we obviously do still have a same responsibility to the taxpayers. At this point in time, you don't have a specific funding request, you're just asking for us to make that request, to be receptive to that when the budgeting time comes, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Atkins?
The, which I meant to ask is this previous, because this was asked of me, and I meant to ask you earlier. On the York One Fire, is that going to be more or less logo, whatever, they will remain of their status station?
Yeah, so the One York Fire is just kind of this.
Yeah, that's just a.
It's just a niche little brand.
Calling card.
Yes, correct, it's just a branding of the effort.
I'm trying to tell you, they ain't going to do it with their station.
Yeah, that's just branding for our effort, but yes, correct, and they'll maintain identity. So, one of the things that we got a lot of feedback was community identity related to these fire departments. Even under a countywide fire service, retaining those names and community ties is very important, so we're remaining cognizant and we'll always keep that a priority.
Any other questions? So, Mr. Garner, I understand that the motion you're requesting from council is to approve the 10-year framework, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and there was an attached resolution with that, with that language, but also committing to work with the JPS regularly. We'll conduct our monthly meetings and meet with the JPS to have those implementation check-ins.
And to have the input from all of the fire service. Appreciate all the work, I know that it's a difficult task, but it's one that if we at least embrace the overall goal, hopefully, we can get there. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posts, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
We do have the other item of new business that was pulled out, item number eight. Was that a rezoning action? Okay.
Yes.
Rezoning action, consider second reading case number 25-35, tax map number 553000017018021232430, to rezone from RMX 10 to GC 5.4 acres in District 2. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Yes, I just want to say, I wanted to pull it out, was more procedural, not nothing against the rezoning. Obviously, Tim's called me, spoke to me about what he had going on. I just don't think rezonings need to be put into consent on second reading. It has been a 7-0 vote across the board through second reading, I think, yeah, it should go to consent. But if we don't have a 7-0 vote, or 6-1, or something outstanding, we shouldn't put rezonings in consent. If you look at what's been put in tonight, over half is third reading, there's a few for second reading. Third readings are fine, but let's don't put second readings in consent unless there's been a unanimous support across the board. And obviously, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I wanted to make that point. I could have done it with one of the other items, and, and the shocking thing on not, the funny thing was when I said it, you should have saw your face, and you're like, oh, God. But no, it's not against the rezoning, I'm just trying to make a point about what we put in consent when it comes to rezoning. Let's lean more so to putting unanimous support items that get to third readings and not so much second readings being put in consent.
That, in this particular case, what we've always historically done is that if there is no member of council who on first reading, obviously, if it's public hearing, it's going to be in the regular agenda. If it was unanimously approved, now recognizing, we don't, if someone's not here, we don't take that into consideration. The process is and always has been, since I've been on council, to put it in consent, recognizing that any one council member can pull anything out of consent without any explanation at all. I do want to make sure that it's clear, though, that that is the consistent path that we have used, is that apparently, that last vote was 5 to 0, there was no one that voted against it, so that's why it would have been in consent, just to explain that.
And I'm all for moving meetings along, so trust me, I'm not doing it just to drag a meeting along, so.
Motion on the table is to approve, and second, any other discussion?
Yeah, so, I did, I wasn't here either, I did, I was able to get some additional information about, about what this was, and I do appreciate getting the information, so I don't, I don't think I have any other questions, I guess, at this point.
Only question I have is with the folks in the community being aware of the rezoning. We've had this discussion many, many times about how they're, you know, how they're contacted. And I understand about the little card, I never, even on planning commission, liked that little card. I've spoken with Tom Couch, hopefully, we can take a deep dive into that little card. And then, the signage for rezoning is less than impressive. You have to be Superman eyes to see those little signs, and they're, I say, somebody comes and moves them always across the, across a really deep ditch, so you can't even see the sign, and you can't even stop your car and look at the sign. So, I just would like for us to pay a little more attention to how our folks are informed of rezonings in their area.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posts? Hearing none, motion carries. That concludes the main actions under our agenda item. There is one thing that I would like to do as a matter of privilege, before we get to the committee reports. I would like to recognize, tonight, we passed third reading of an incentive plan that was done in order to attract a headquarters to our area and did not give them a chance to speak. I opened it up for the public hearing, and I think there was a little bit of confusion about whether or not that they should or not speak, so I wanted to give that opportunity to allow you to come forward and speak and say welcome to you.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. My name is Nicole Taylor, I am part of the Riverstone Leadership Team, AKA Project Cross. And on behalf of our team and our CEO, Charlie Workman, who's here tonight, and our entire company, we are so grateful for the warm welcome to Rock Hill, the county of York, the state of South Carolina. This headquarter move for us was really more than just a business decision. It was an intentional commitment to really put roots in the people and the opportunities in this area, so we're very excited. At Riverstone, our purpose statement is to use our God-given talents and opportunities to love our neighbors, serve our community, and improve our industry. And while we're very excited about the jobs and the innovation that will happen in this space, we're most passionate about being a neighbor of impact. And so, love, serve, and improve, we kind of filter everything through those, through our purpose statement, and we're excited to be able to do that together with, with you all in the city of Rock Hill. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am, and we do appreciate the investment that you bring to our county, we appreciate the work that you're going to be doing, and, and we are here for you if you need us, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a few committee reports that we need to run through, our first is Planning and Zoning Committee, Chairwoman Debbie Kloninger.
Okay, Planning and Zoning met on September the 10th, and in attendance were Councilmen Atkins and Litten. We had several things to discuss that evening, the first being a discussion on the height. We had this discussion, it was just a matter of tying off some loose ends on hotels to bring it up so that they can possibly put some entertainment things on top of hotels. But this will be coming in the form of an ordinance. It was passed that this be considered by council. And then, we also had a discussion on signs, and being the signs on commercial buildings, and how there's like a, I see Councilman Roddy may be interested in signs, are you interested in signs?
No, I was waiting, asked a question about the height.
Okay.
Only increasing the heights on the buildings.
Okay. So, the signs, it's very simple, and we've had that discussion many times on signs. There will also be an ordinance coming soon on that. Then, we have, one of our big topics that we've been asked to look at would be some language on our, some zoning issues with maybe light industrial, industrial, some other zoning issues. It's a large task, it was something that several of us had ideas that we wanted to put forth. So, the method that we came up with was to email the planning department with your particular issues that you're having or you would like to see added to zoning, and so, that's, that's kind of how we will address it. Planning will get all the emails together, and then, we'll have another meeting and kind of hash out what everyone is interested in or has an issue with. The final discussion was on the Lake Wiley overlay, we did hear from several constituents of D2, and a motion was made to allow the overlay to remain in place. So, Councilman Roddy, what's your question?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, he had a question. Can I?
I just wanted to know, were we looking at any height increases on buildings in that ordinance?
Was there, I guess the question, the recommendation in the staff report, is that going to be something that is forthcoming? Since their meeting was so recent, that there wasn't one, or just so that we know what the recommendations?
And I would let Tom or Jonathan answer this, but the staff report's done when there's a, something voted on, it comes out of committee back to council. So, I know the chair's giving a summary tonight, but not everything she's talking about are they done with. So, they still have some work to do with some of these items, so I don't know which specific item you were wondering about, a staff report?
I guess I'm just trying to figure out, was anything specifically recommended out of committee, motion and a second, or is that something that'll come later with a subsequent staff report, just to keep things consistent?
Yeah, so, the meeting was this past Wednesday, there will be a staff report detailing the discussion items as they voted on the four items there in more detail, and the two items that they requested an ordinance be brought forward through that process. Those will have individual staff reports that get presented to planning commissioner and to you all. But in just very general terms, the two items that they requested an ordinance for, the height, they wanted an increase in general commercial of 10 feet, so going from 50 to 60, if there's a sufficient setback added to residential lots, and then also adding some exemptions for rooftop amenities. So, that was an ordinance that they requested. The second item, specific to wall signs, so right now, the code's very specific, you can have one wall sign of a certain size, so that's proving to be problematic for commercial users that have very big buildings, or they have multiple users, so the committee wanted to have some small tweaks made to that table to make that more user-friendly.
And that second item is something that's already been voted out of committee?
Yeah, so that'll be coming to planning commissioner's.
Right, thank you, Jonathan. Finance and Operations Committee, Chairman Tom Aldette.
Yeah, so, tonight, we had a meeting at 5:30 tonight, Roddy, excuse me, Councilman Roddy and Councilman Atkins were in attendance to it. We do have a good and exciting announcement here, this is actually, we did go through, and we have announced our choices for Economic Development Board, which is, again, we reestablish it, so this is, again, exciting news for the public and for the council. So, again, on the announcement, we considered application for services for Economic Development Board for District 1, for Scott Miller, for District 2, for Kevin Blackwood, for District 3, John Bloomberg, for District 4, Connie Kane, for District 5, we had David Oxedine for District 6, David Williams, and District 7, Paul Arne. And then, moving on, we're other committee seats, we did nomination for application for Board of Appeals. We, in District 3, we nominated Sherri Siege. And then, for the application for consideration of Stormwater Appeal Board, we have Martha Kern that we nominated for an at-large seat. And lastly, we had a few motions for allocations of fund, District 6, for Christmasville, Rock Hill, with an amount of $1,000, allocation of funds for District 6 of Defend the Father for 1,500, allocation of fund for District 6 for Pathways Communication Center, Community Center, excuse me, for 1,000, and then, allocation of fund for District 6 Keystone Substance Abuse Services for. 500. And lastly, District Six for Safe Passage for 1,500. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. Any council member new knowledge in the comments before executive session? Mr. Roddy?
I know that there was, there's been a request made for the Public Works Committee to meet again. We, we'll be meeting hopefully by the end of the month. And also, I want to public, and I'm not, I tried to reach you, Tom, over the weekend and we were back and forth a little bit, but I'm sure you had a hand in helping that gentleman get that apron, that driveway apron on his driveway because he called me last week and thanked me for our efforts of helping him get that done. He was kind of getting a runaround from the city, the state or whatever, but I reached out to Tom and with, within a week and a half or so, the gentleman called me back and said, it's been done. So I just wanted to publicly thank you.
I'm glad there was, glad there was a good outcome.
All right, I got a, go ahead, Tom. I got a couple of things here. I got a JPS Committee charge request. I respectfully request that the Justice and Public Safety Committee be charged with reviewing two matters. One, to consider the possible ordinance established of the Tier Two report fees to support the local emergency planning, hazmat training and equipment, and two, the evaluation of the role of proposable MAT, SUA contract renewal given in current agreements of the June 2026 expiration. These referrals will ensure the committee provides direction and recommendations for council's consideration.
Sounds like a staff request. Thank you, sir.
Yes, council.
Any objections to those items?
You know I didn't write that. And the next thing is, in which everybody's about been cleared out of here, but hopefully somebody's listening out there, I would just like to bring to attention in light of everything that occurs, that, unlike all of us come from a different background, but I was sitting here just thinking about how since nowadays it seems like nobody can agree to disagree with one another anymore, that I can remember when I was young and, which you may remember, Atkins store and all the stores we used to go to when we was young and the old Republican and Democrat, me and going around to them. And those jokers would be eating them bologna sandwiches and arguing with one another and they'd fuss and disagree with one another and then get up and say, well, I'm tired arguing with you. We got to get back to work. You, you remember all that?
Well, I remember bologna sandwiches. They make everything better. Fried bologna.
Makes me hungry. Makes me hungry. And you know, it's just hard to believe in so little years that we've reached this point. And I was kind of thinking to myself, you know, and y'all, y'all laugh at this, but it's kind of true. If, if we don't bring our great-grandparents back, we, we about are going to lose our country. Because it's kind of hard to believe, we talk about all this great education and all this stuff we got. And the folks that had the least amount of education, for some reason, knew how to live the best and lived most right. And, and we just need to take that all into thought. Most people ain't cutting firewood, they just turn a knob. They got the most comfortable vehicles, they got the best of everything. And the more comfortable you get, the least harder you have to work. If it's going to get you this, you, you need to go back to plow mules and having to walk everywhere if, if it's going to make us all be like this. So I've said what I got to say.
Well, I, I have to agree with you that learning to agree to disagree is one of the things that I, I very much appreciate about the colleagues here upon this council. I think we do, you know, we're not one of those rubber stamp groups. We all have different opinions and very appreciative of, of the work that we do. And we, even when we have difference of opinion, how we deal with it. And I think setting that example is, is critically important. Before, before we take the next one, I, I do think it's important that when we have a, a staff request referral to a committee, that we get some information, just so that council's aware of what the committee referral request is.
So I was going to tell you, David sent an email about a week ago to y'all with all that information and, and Councilmember Atkins was willing to, to make the charge. So what we're trying to do is formalize the staff recommendation process to committee. So that's what we did. We sent an email, we explained it, we offered up the opportunity to answer anybody's questions. But David's prepared to give you all a quick update if you didn't see that email. David?
Yeah, so the two items that were requested, we have Tier Two reporting, that is a federal requirement, but in York County, we're one of the counties in South Carolina that do not require any fees for those chemicals. And so we would just like to have the discussion with the JPS Committee to discuss having Tier Two fees as well with that reporting. But there's a long process with that, the ordinance development. That was one of the items. And there's very specific things that it can go to support. So we wanted to bring that to the JPS Committee. The second one is our current Motorola contract. It expires in June of next year, but it is a long, lengthy process of renegotiating that contract. Additionally, we also have an RFP out for a communication consultant. But unfortunately, those two, the timeline will have to walk hand in hand together. So we need to work and discuss this contract with the committee because we'll go down kind of that granular level at the same time that we're doing this RFP with a, a communication consultant. So those were the two items to give you some more context.
Thank you, David and Josh. Certainly that is referred to the JPS Committee with your approval.
So in the light of that horrible event that occurred to Charlie Kirk last week, I just want first of all, say my, my hopes, my, I want to say my prayers go out to his family. And my hope is that a revival will break out in this country. And again, we need to openly communicate with each other at all times. That is critical for our nation.
Any other comments before we go to executive session?
Yes, please. Economic Development tomorrow was slated for 4:30, it's moving to 5:00 in case the public, anybody wanted to come to that meeting or you want to tune in. And then second thing is, we have three reviews that need to hit our agenda for executive session. Staff reviews that we need to get on our agenda at some point. So we'd like to recommend that we find a spot in an upcoming agenda and let's.
That's already being handled. Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Thank you.
I was hoping we got through tonight without even mentioning Charlie Kirk's name.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes. Motion to receive legal advice, legal matters, litigation update.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We will go into executive session.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?